Calling to order the Monday, June 7th, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here in Berkeley.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here in Berkeley.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here in Berkeley.
Councilmember Gavin? Councilmember Hennan?
Here in Berkeley.
Councilmember Price?
Here in Berkeley.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here in Berkeley. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve with one amendment, one change to the agenda. I'd like to remove item number five from tonight's agenda pending further conversations that need to take place.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Any discussion on the motion around the agenda as amended? Okay, seeing no further discussion, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Pastor Tal Sullivan.
Let's pray. God, it's a privilege for us to approach you and ask for your blessings. And God, in this context of a city council meeting, we want that. We want your blessings for our city. We want your blessings, God, for those that serve in our city, our mayor and our city council members and all those who who work in the city in so many various ways. So, God, we ask that you would meet needs that are known in the city as well as those that are unknown, those that are really private people in the city who are hurting. And I just pray, God, that we would be a city where your love is known. I pray, God, that tonight in this meeting, that our council members would have wisdom from you in making decisions and not just in this meeting, but every day. God, for all of the needs that are represented by those that are in this meeting right now, I pray that you administer to those needs in ways that only you can do. I pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have come to our first public comments section of the evening. This is for items that are included on tonight's agenda, again, so items that we will be covering this evening. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymish.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you'd like to comment and you're already on the meeting, please raise your hand either in person or virtually. If you are trying to dial in and you'd like to comment right now, please call 1-312-626-6799. You'll be prompted to put in a meeting ID. That ID is 949-2984-6645. And the phone number is 312-626-6799. Meeting ID 949-2984-6645. You'll be recognized by either your name or your phone number, and when you speak, please state your name and city of residence. And remember, you will be limited to three minutes.
Not seeing anyone's hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll give everybody another minute or two, just in case. Gina, did you receive any emails to be read into the record for items that are included on the agenda? Okay, I'm gonna assume that's a no.
No.
Okay. Tori, anybody else?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close the first public comments. Remember, there will be public comments again for items at the end of the meeting that were not included on tonight's agenda. We now move to our order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Harold, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Resolution number R-19-21, matter of a, oops, excuse me. I need to go back to your consent agenda. Okay, consent agenda, item number one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 38th regular city council meeting on Monday, May 17th, 2021. Budget work session on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, and budget work session on Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. Item number two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1363. Item number three, ordinance number O-05-21, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan to amend section 58 through 34 of Article 2 of Chapter 58, garbage and rubbish, garbage, rubbish, and refuse to modify the diameter and length of branches and limbs and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Item number four, proclamation number P-20-21, matter proclaiming June 19th, 2021 to be Juneteenth Celebration Day. Item number five, proclamation number P-21-21, matter proclaiming the week of June 21st through June 27th, 2021 to be the Lightning Safety Week.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'm moved, Your Honor.
Support. Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any corrections, additions, or changes or discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to this evening's regular agenda. Ms. Harold, would you please read item number one?
Resolution number R-19-21, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan to formally rename Oxford Merchants Park to Oxford Park.
Is there a motion to approve R-19-21?
I'm moved. Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Way back in 2014, the city purchased a portion of land that was formerly owned by the school district and was the home to the former Oxford School. It happened to be right next to Merchant Park, so from that point on, it was sort of unofficially known as Merchants Oxford Park. As we've gone about our, the process of making that a brand-new space, we knew we needed a new name and thought, why not ask the community itself to offer up names as well as explanations as to what would be the best way to move forward on that? We conducted a public outreach. We got some fantastic suggestions. They went to the Recreation Advisory Board as well as staff to prepare a set of top responses for the council to review. And ultimately, as you see in the resolution before you today, the name Oxford Park and all of its history is the one that ultimately prevailed and we bring before you this evening to make it official and move forward and cut the ribbon on the new and move new and approved Oxford Park on Friday. So, this, again, this process was administered and by our Parks Recreation Director, Teresa McCarleton, as well as our community engagement officer, Tori Mathis. So, they had a lot of fun with this, and now we look forward to a brand-new era here of doing something new, but with also a little touch of history as well. And they're both available for questions, sir.
Mr. McCarleton, any comments or follow-up?
Um, just maybe a little bit more on the process. Again, people submitted names. Those top names then went to, or all of those names, they went to the Recreation Advisor Committee and staff. From there, each person made their their top five choices. And then the the names that came out the highest were then given to council, and council made the final selection, just so that's that's clear for everybody. And, you know, we're excited to move forward. We've got the grand opening on Friday. We're excited to have a name for this park. No more splashes and dashes and multiple names. I think the historical aspect is great. And again, many thanks to also Ms. Tori Mathis for all her assistance with all of us along the way. And I think it's nice that we're moving forward. Kind of a new park with a with an old name, so it's kind of a blending. I think I think it really suits Berkeley very well.
Thank you. Tori, anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I'm just super excited, and I hope to see you guys all there. This will be my first, like, ribbon-cutting with the city, given the shutdown, so I'm very excited to to see the community and come together for this great event.
Thank you both. Council, discussion, questions? I guess comments probably more so than anything. Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you. Yes, I just want to take a moment and congratulate Teresa and her team. This has been a long time coming, and a lot of thought and planning has gone into this with a lot of input from residents. So, we're not only adding to that park, we're upgrading existing equipment, so we'll be safer and able to be enjoyed and utilized by all ages and abilities. And so, it's really an exciting time, and I'm really happy to be part of this council that, you know, was instrumental in helping that happen, but it's just so great to see. So, I can't wait for Friday. Congratulations to you, Teresa, and to your team. Support from Tori. I know a lot of work went into promoting this and organizing, and you have a lot of moving parts that you're responsible for. So, thank you, Tori, for doing such a great job with all of this, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Price?
Yes, of course, Teresa and your team. Congratulations, and thank you so much for all of the work. I also wanted to thank all the residents who took the time to submit names and also participate in the in the bench donation program, which I think that was a great way also, Teresa, to involve the community and get people even more invested in this beautiful community-building asset. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any additional conversation? Well, we are certainly all very excited for for Friday. I was telling councilmembers before we went live, I'm really looking forward to that splash path. I will, I will be in the center of it when everything turns on. Call the kids. I can tell you, you know, Teresa, you know this, but that park has been extremely, extremely busy, the play equipment, since it opened, and it is getting tremendous use. And ultimately, that's, that's, you know, what you and your department and everybody else who's who's been involved in this lengthy process ultimately wanted to see, something in our community that everybody could use, everybody would be excited about, could celebrate. And coming at the end of, not necessarily at the end, but as we wind down one of the more difficult years with the pandemic and not being able to to be outside and to be with as many folks, the timing really couldn't be better for this, and I'm very excited. And as far as the name goes, there was a lot of secret balloting here with the council members to try to, you know, get to this name, and it was difficult. But, and I, I mean, in all honesty, it was difficult. I mean, it's a name park. At the end of the day, I hope it doesn't really offend anybody either way. I just want to be able to enjoy it, but it wasn't a super easy decision. But I do think the nod to the past, into the history of Berkeley with the new equipment and the updated facilities and the the new recreational offerings, I do think it is a nice way to meld the old and the new and honor our history and our community. With no further ado, Ms. Harold, then would you please call the roll on R-19-21?
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Harold, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-20-21, matter of approving a resolution of the council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Adrian and Eric Patel for their years of volunteerism and dedication for the Friends, to the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation.
Is there a motion to approve R-20-21?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Teresa, do you want to kick this off?
I would love to.
Do you want me to read the resolution first, or do you want to read it?
Yeah, I can. Can we do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Sure, we can do that. A resolution of the council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Adrian and Eric Patel for their years of volunteerism and dedication to the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation. Whereas Adrian has been a member of the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation for over seven years, and the president of the group for over three years. And Eric has been a member and treasurer for over three years. And whereas over their years of service to the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation, Adrian and Eric oversaw a number of fundraising events and countless donations to the Parks and Recreation Department in the City of Berkeley. And whereas donations to the city include a large television for the community center for the senior area, an outdoor ice rink for the city, park benches, sponsorships in every Summer Fest and Winter Fest event, and more. And whereas Adrian and Eric dedicated their time, energy, and funds from the Friends of the Berkeley Parks and Recreation to beautify and update Friends Park, formerly known as Oxford Towers. And whereas Adrian and Eric, through Friends of the Berkeley Parks and Recreation, hosted a number of recreation events and volunteered at many as well. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the council of the City of Berkeley sincerely appreciates the effort, dedication, and volunteerism of Adrian and Eric Patel, who went above and beyond to improve and benefit Berkeley Parks and Recreation and the entire city of Berkeley. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, June 7th, 2021. Signed by me. Teresa?
Um, I'll try not to cry. Um, sorry. Try to be professional, but sometimes it's personal, too. I really like Adrian and Eric a lot. They're moving out of Berkeley, which is why I think it was important to do a resolution to thank them for all that they did. We work for the city and council is elected, but people don't have to give up their time, and they did, and I really appreciate that. And we're super appreciative of them. We'll miss them, but they're not going to be strangers. And Amy Lister and Aaron Thomas are also on this call, who are still and not leaving Members of the Friends. And here to support Adrian and Eric as well, and I'm just super grateful to them and to everyone that volunteers their time and does so really just for the betterment of the community and not for themselves.
You want to say anything before we throw it over to Adrian and Eric for a minute? Thank you for being with us this evening, first of all.
Way to put us on the spot. Um, yeah, cheers. It's sad, but I mean, without Eric and Adrian, like, this group, we're very small. So, um, I appreciate all the support and all the meetings and all the ideas and the fundraising that they have helped put together for our group, and we are going to miss them so much and hope that they still come, especially when we can have our UFR tournaments back again.
Thank you.
I know all that. I can't talk. I'm an ugly rock.
All right, all right. Thanks, Dan. I appreciate it. Now, Adrian and Eric, it obviously is, as was mentioned, sad to see you guys go. But but this resolution alone unfortunately doesn't do justice to the amount of time and energy and passion that you both put into the Friends organization. But even more, just just the city of Berkeley, like, it wasn't just Friends things that you guys were involved in. It was, you know, anything that's going on in the city, various events, causes, things that were important for our community. You guys were always there, and you were always willing willing to help out, and we certainly thank you for everything that you guys have done, and you can't get too far. I mean, we know where to find you. Doesn't matter where you go, we will, we'll still find you guys. Adrian and Eric, anything you guys want to say outside there? You under an umbrella or what?
Yeah, we're good now. We're underneath the car, the car, the back of the car. Anyway, but, yeah, I'm not a great, I'm not a great squeaker. But I do appreciate all the support that we've had from the city and working with the different city members and council that our group wouldn't be what it is unless we had, we didn't have all, every, the community's support. And it was, yeah, we volunteered, but we had fun, too. We had a lot of fun. So, it was, you know, we're, like Amy said, we're a small group, but we we try and make make it work with what we have.
No, I'd just like to say that, you know, we really appreciate this, and you know, we're just two people in the group, and the groups got many capable hands still there. And, you know, that's kind of what being in Berkeley is all about, is volunteering for the community. So, glad that, you know, Berkeley gave us the opportunity to do that.
And we will definitely miss it, for sure. That's the one thing we will miss about Berkeley is it's a great community, and everybody seems to care about each other, so. It'll be sad to leave.
Let's not say it's the one thing you're gonna miss. There's gonna be many things, but there's more and more things. Come on now. Now, guys, I appreciate you taking some time, and honestly, as I, as I said before, you know, what you said, Eric, we are a true community here, and and people routinely will will be involved and go above and beyond, but that doesn't happen when we don't see people like you doing it. And then that energizes other folks to say, hey, you know, I want to get involved, too, and I want to help out. So, incredibly grateful for for everything that you guys have contributed to our community. Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and thank you, Teresa, for putting this together and putting a nice burnout for us. Thank you.
Any other comments? I guess I probably should have went to the council comments before I jumped in and stepped on everybody. Apologize. No? Okay. Well, everybody, everybody agrees, Adrian and Eric. I can promise you that. Thank you, Ms. Harold. Would you please call the roll on R-20-21?
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Certainly. Yes, yes. Thanks, guys. Ms. Harold, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-29-21, matter of approving the purchase of official Woodward Dream Cruise merchandise to be sold at various locations during the month of August at a cost not to exceed $28,000. Funds for this expenditure will come from account number, or from account 614-915-818-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-29-21?
Motion to approve.
Support.
By Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Hennan. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to making wonderful parks and working with fantastic volunteers, Teresa McCarleton also heads up or represents the city as the vice president of the Dream Cruise Board. And she also is one of the staff liaisons that works with the Cruise Fest volunteer organization as well. Both of those events are coming up, and as we typically do this time of year, we're getting ready to purchase the apparel that will turn around and sell, that people can purchase in commemoration of the fun events that are coming up here in August. So, as you note in your packets, Teresa's done a memo on the items that will be purchased, and she also is still with you this evening to answer any questions you may have.
Teresa?
Yeah, so it's that simple every year. Well, up until, obviously, last year, I didn't come to you for a purchase, but prior to that, I would come to the council, ask for the allotted amount to purchase merchandise. We then have community groups, nonprofit community groups in our, in our city who sell the merchandise and receive a portion of those sales, and the city receives the other half of those sales. In the past several years, we have not, we have not gone to what our maximum in terms of merchandise purchase is. Really, we start a number that makes sense for the committee and makes sense for the group, and then, you know, give or take, maybe go up. Typically, we land between, anywhere between $23,000 and $26,000. But if you're having a good sales year, obviously, you you could go ahead, but we start low and and see how that first week goes. Obviously, this year, we're going to be very conservative to begin because we don't know exactly what 2021 is going to look like in terms of people, you know, buying merchandise and and out there. So, we'll work closely, as we always do, both myself, Dan McMinister in our office, and then we work closely with Mark from the Cruise Fest Committee to do the initial purchase. And then we'll work with those community groups to to start selling. It's not an exact science. I mean, we've been doing it for long enough that we kind of know what's going to sell. I actually was talking to the merchandiser today, getting, was getting some opinions on colors, things like that. We purchase from the official Dream Cruise merchandise vendor. They have a contract, the Dream Cruise Board, which we are members of. So, we we purchase from EA Graphics. They are on their second three-year contract, I believe. And we do the best we can to to get what will, what will sell, and then you really want to sell it. So, we're hoping for a good 2021. Obviously, everyone's excited that we're able to have these events this year and working hard to make them wonderful community events and safe for everyone.
Excellent, excellent. Question? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. More of just a compliment, but there might be a question in here somewhere. I do, again, want to congratulate and thank you and the entire team, including the Mr. Coon and all of the volunteers that helped make this a great success. I do appreciate also the thoughtfulness with which you and the team are approaching the, spending the money that had been allocated, you know, and as you've mentioned in the past, you haven't normally come close to the total amount. I hope that, you know, that folks continue to be safe in this COVID, you know, world that we still find ourselves in. And yet, I, you know, my guts tell me folks are going to be coming out full force and then some this time around. So, I hope that we find ourselves reordering additional, you know, things early and often here due to some pent-up demand. But but anyway, fingers crossed, certainly be supporting us tonight, and again, kudos to to you and the team for what will hopefully be a great set of merch that will do the city proud. Thank you.
Thank you. I would agree with Councilmember Baker. I am, I'm not a betting man, but if I were, I would bet that the crowds this year are going to be just as large, if not larger, as everybody tries to safely get back outside and resume some sort of normalcy as we move forward throughout the summer. Additional questions, Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah, and this is not related specifically to the merchandise, just tangential. It looks like we have every intention of putting on a Cruise Fest event, like we, similar to how we have in the past, and and that will happen this year. Yes?
Yes, yeah. So, and all the Cruise Fest webpage and Facebook page were both updated today so that people know that. We have had some registrations for the car parade. People can call if you were registered before or you had a parking spot in Woodward. You're, you should be getting your re-registration letters in the mail sometime in the next week, and then you can send those in, or you can also call. But as of right now, the as of right now, the committee, we met both in March and then in May, and then May the decision was made to move forward with the Cruise Fest events. And again, that committee is made up of volunteers, but also a number of city staff. Not just myself, obviously. There's, you know, public safety, public works, city manager, community development. There's a lot of people that made up that decision. So yes, as of right now, Cruise Fest 2021, it will officially be the 25th annual for Cruise Fest. It was supposed to be 2020. Obviously, that did not happen. So it will officially be the 25th Cruise Fest, which is Berkeley's premier event.
I think if there's any silver lining, we now get to have our 25th Cruise Fest on a brand-new mile road. So.
You're absolutely right. We talked about how last year it would have been a little unfortunate if we had to move it. And so, yes, yes.
Right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I mean, just the fact that we are able to talk about this anyway, that we are moving forward and planning is obviously tremendous. We found ourselves in that same scenario last year with the number of events. So the fact that we're able to plan for this and making it and back on 12 mile where it should be, fits very nicely for our 25th anniversary. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M 29 21?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Harold, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R dash 21 dash 21, matter of considering updates to the Berkeley fee schedule effective July 1st, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve R 21 21?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Uh, like I said, Mayor, as you notice on the packet, this is a comprehensive fee schedule listing the various fees that each and every one of our departments will charge over the course of a year for the various wonderful services that they provide. This process, or this comes to you after a process of review from each of those departments. As the memo in your packet indicates, programs change, the responsibility that's shouldered by the city sometimes changes. And also the cost that we incur in the provision of these services sometimes changes. So that's why we offer periodic updates to this fee schedule. They all have to be approved by council. We typically like to do this in the course of the budgeting process. So this is very timely as we just recently approved that document. And we'll have this posted on the websites. And it's also a matter of public record for anyone to take a look at as well. So it's all obviously in a nod towards transparency so that there's no secret charging. Nobody can be surprised or sidelined by a fee that they weren't expecting. So we try to make every opportunity that we can possibly can in order to manage expectations from the people that, you know, do business with the city. This is, of course, outside of the normal tax dollars that someone would pay to the city. As you see in here, it is comprehensive. We do have one item that is different from your packet that we would like to to offer up. There was a proposed increase in a bond in the Community Development Department. We found that we have not had an easy time covering the costs that are sometimes associated with fixing up easements after a worker has been, hasn't come through with the promises that they made in the process of pulling the permit. As we often talk about, that is not something that ought to be shouldered by the city at large. So we would utilize those bond fees to to pay for the restorations in those situations. So Community Development Director Aaron Schluto has a proposed update to the item that's in your packet this evening. But other than that, other than that one line item, we asked the council approve the document so that we can get it publicized in time for the new fiscal year.
Aaron, do you want to talk anymore to that specific item?
Well, I have a number of things. Thank you and good evening, everyone. So the proposed fee schedule that you have there really just shows everything that was done. And so if I may, I just would go through a couple of things and highlight the ones that we did change just for your reference and your record. So updated fees for the Fire Marshal Plan Review, that was just a minor increase from $30 to 35, just based on the time and experience of our Fire Marshal to make sure that those documents are up to code and to top shape. The permit fees for heating, plumbing, electrical building, those remain largely unchanged. However, for the refrigeration permits, we did add a line for mini splits. These are becoming more and more popular. The Building Department had noticed that there's far more of these happening, which is a mini split from your AC units. You still have your AC unit located outside your home, but then you have these little mini splits that are either in different rooms or on different floors. And certainly, that's becoming more and more popular and energy efficient with our with our new builds. So we didn't have a line item for that. So we wanted to make sure we added it so that we were charging correctly, not only for the, for the permit, but also making sure that our inspectors are being recouped because the inspector has to go into the home and look at those each individually. We also updated the fees for the water-suing excavating bonds. This is the item that City Manager Matt Clumberg mentioned. So we were specifying that there's a $500 bond for private property. And then we increased the fee for the right-of-way bond from 1,000 to 5,000. And that was the item that needs to be amended in your fee schedule this evening. It was on our draft document, but somehow it just didn't get transferred over into your final document this evening. So I apologize for that. The increase, we increased in fees for the water tap and service to valve in consultation with Derek Schuler and Sean Young from DPW. The one-inch to two-inch water tap and service valves will be increased to $3,000 each. And now you may see that the three-inch and the four-inch are reduced to 1,700 and 1,900 respectively. And Derek could expand on this a little bit more. But based on discussions with Sean Young there, the the role and the responsibility for the one to two inches largely on the responsibility of DPW. So the staff goes out and does those those installations and those repairs. Now, for the three-inch to the four-inch, the reason that those fees remain the same is because the contractor is generally responsible for those. They have to tie into the water main, tear up the road and all that stuff. So the role and the responsibility of DPW is largely removed for the three-to-four-inch water tap. So that's why the fees are increased for the smaller taps. The rest of the updates, and the majority of the focus on the updates were for the Community Development Department. We increased the fees for the engineering reviews for multifamily and commercial. This is largely in part due to the fact that we've had a couple of large-scale commercial projects come through and the multifamily at La Celeste come through. And the number of reviews, it's not just one review that goes through the Planning Commission, there's multiple. And what we have found, or what I have found, is that there's been a lot of follow-up and a lot of going back and forth to the developer from HRC and back and forth to recoup the cost and make sure that the city isn't funding this type of, the type of reviews and projects. That requires a lot of, can require a lot of time and effort from his city staff. So making sure we incur those or recoup those costs above, at the forefront is important. We've also included a fee for escrows for these such purposes for the large-scale projects such as PUD, the new multifamily development and a commercial construction. And this would be reimbursable after the project is complete. It's just kind of gives us a bit of a buffer in case there's additional expenses outside of the review fees that I mentioned before. We've also increased the fees for rezoning, site plan reviews, street alley vacation, ZVA variances and appeals. This is largely due to the fact that some of these projects require a public hearing notice. And that is a notice in the newspaper, mails out to 300, property owners within 300 feet, as well as the temporary signs. And what we were finding is that a lot of these, we weren't recovering our costs. So the public hearing notice could be up to $300 depending on the scale and scope. A rezoning also includes review and approval or blessings, or whatever you want to call it, from the city attorney. So there's city attorney reviews involved as well as other departments that have to look at this. So we were really not recouping all of the city costs and things were going out. Just weren't. So that's where we, where we increased a bit. And then we also added fees for special meetings. This was something that wasn't included before, and we wanted to make sure that that an applicant had that opportunity if they wanted to, but that also we had the funds in order to get city staff and prepared and rush any kind of review we needed to do if they had a tight deadline that they needed to meet. So it's just a way for us to try to work with the applicant if they're on a tight deadline. Of course, we encourage them to wait for their monthly meeting, but if there is extenuating circumstances, we want to make sure we can work with them if need be. And finally, we added a line item for an ordinance text amendment. If there is an applicant-driven request to look at an ordinance amendment by the Planning Commission and they deem that it's appropriate, again, this goes to meeting the public hearing notice and needing to go before the public body. Res zoning, as you know, is a map ordinance amendment. So we had one for the map zoning map. And so it was important to make sure we had one for the text as well, if a property owner or applicant was so inclined. So those are the bulk of the changes. In addition to that, there was a complete reformatting that our Ashley Mers in our city office undertook to make the document more readable. Before that, it was just a Word document with a line and then dot, 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 dot and a fee. So this is much easier to read and understandable from, not only from the city staff perspective, but from from the publics as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions on our fee schedule? Councilmember Baker? Yes, thank you. And thank you very much for, for calling out or recognizing the reformatting. I was going to comment on that. I think it's it is really easy to read now. I greatly appreciate that. And kind of tying together the excellent walkthrough that you just provided with the city manager's comments. Everything you described, just so I'm looking to clarify in my own mind, everything that you described, with one exception, is what's in the document before us, right? There was just the one correction made to it. That's what I understand, right? Just so my notes are clear?
Yes, everything else in the document is correct. It was just the one, the one fee for the right-of-way bond that was inadvertently missed.
Perfect. Yep. Excellent. Thanks. And again, I appreciate the walkthrough. It helps us understand the breadth of care that we offer in the inspection process and things across the city to make sure everything runs smoothly and safely. So thank you again for that. Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Director Schluto, for taking the time to explain the changes that were made and the reasonings for them. I appreciate the time and thought that went into this very much. I like the formatting. I like how we're making this public for transparency so that no one is surprised. There was just one fee in there when I read through that I didn't know what it meant. And so I was just wondering if City Manager Matt Baumgartner, if you could explain the precious medal and gem fee for us?
Yes, we do not charge directly for those gems. That is actually a public safety item that what they do is they working with somebody who is a broker or wholesaler, like a buyer of precious gems and materials. There's a fee that public safety recoups in the course of investigating and doing all the due diligence that are required of them from the state's approval process for these types of businesses. So it's above and beyond our normal business fee. Again, recouping those costs so they're not shouldered by the community as a whole.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Blanchard, I figured you might want to jump in here.
Well, I've got one question and I'd like to know how we're going to tell you this. I see that we've got a movie rental fee at $1 per page. Now, how many pages are there in a movie? This is on page 18 of the schedule. I think that might be a typo, but I'm not sure. But I just thought I better bring that up because I don't want somebody sitting around trying to figure out how pages are in a movie for quite a while.
Yeah, I thought it was a dollar per minute, actually. So, you know, either question would be crazy. Yeah. There are 48 pages in a movie.
Okay. Other than that, I think it looks good. The formatting is great. Everything looks good. There should be no questions about what the fees are now. Should be able to find them very easily. So thank you.
Thank you. And we have Councilmember Blanchard's noted. Obviously, we'll take a look at her page on the movie. We'll get that squared away. Any final comments, questions? I appreciate all of the description as Director Schluto went through this. But again, the fact that it is so much more user-friendly and readable is a tremendous improvement because these questions come up all the time. And residents want to know, you know, I'm thinking about doing this. What does it look like? Or want to rent, you know, some space at a community center. And I mean, everything is here. Everything is spelled out. It's very easy to find. You can go department by department. You can find exactly what you're looking for. And ease of use is incredibly important in any municipality and certainly in this one as well. With no additional questions or comments, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on R 21 21?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We have now reached our second public comment section of the evening. And these are for items that were not included on this evening's agenda. The same rules as before apply here. Councilmembers will not engage you in a discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please email the Clerk's Office at clerk@berkleymish.net or call the Clerk's Office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand virtually or in person or dial in at 1312-626-6799. The meeting ID that you'll be prompted to put in is 949-2984-6645. It should also be on the screen. You'll be recognized by either name or number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence. And remember, you will be limited to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one hand raised at the moment.
Okay.
So Tyrell, you can go ahead and start.
Thank you. Charles Tyrell, Berkeley. Two things I'd like to address tonight. One is with the ease of recording and posting meetings, I am very disappointed that the DDA still is not recording and posting meetings. I'd like to ask the council to require that, not just on Zoom, but when they do restart their in-person meetings, require the DDA to record them and post them, please. Secondly, I would like to have a vote, if it's with the primary or if it's too late for that, to put it on the November ballot to vote on marijuana businesses. I would like a separate referendum for each of the various marijuana businesses. For example, somebody might be okay with an enclosed warehouse for warehousing or growing or transportation and not support a retail establishment. So that's why I'm asking for separate resolutions, separate votes on each of those. And if the council does it, it just makes it that much easier and cleaner and makes it happen versus a petition to make that happen. So I'm asking council to take that up at your next possible moment and approve putting that on the ballot. There's been a lot of talk that, well, Berkeley voted 70% to approve marijuana businesses? No, Berkeley didn't vote on approving marijuana businesses in Berkeley. So we need to have that vote. Thank you.
You? Anybody else, Tori?
Seeing any other hands raised at this time?
While we are meeting, Ms. Harold, any communications that you received for items that were not included on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I do have.
Yes, I do have one.
Okay.
So Steve, Steve Allen, ZDA board member and Berkeley resident writes about proposed resolution R dash twenty-two dash twenty-one. He expresses his concern about city council consider, considering settling the recent ZDA case regarding the placement of a generator and the potential it may have for future ZDA decisions.
Okay, thank you. We already discussed that there will be additional conversations regarding that item. Thank you, Mr. Allen, for sending in your thoughts. Anybody else, Tori, that we see happening here?
No, sir.
Okay. We will move into communications and Ms. Harold, I've decided that I am going to let you choose who goes first.
Blanchard?
Jack, you're up.
Okay, I've only got a couple of things, just want to, let everybody know what the chamber is working on lately. The chamber, of course, is currently working on the following events. The Berkeley Street Art Fest, which is going to be August seventh, the Dream Cruise and Cruise Fest, which is August twentieth and twenty-first, and the Berkeley Art Bash, which is going to be September eleventh. Those are all changed dates this year compared to what they were last year. The Art Fest and the, the Art Fest and the Art Bash have been both moved back because of COVID. Also like to remind everybody that school is going to be out soon. And so we'll be having more kids playing in the streets. We need to be careful, although kids have been out and running around because school's been in and out, in and out all, all year. But I just want everybody to be cautious because I know on my street, I see scooters going up and down all the time and they don't sometimes think about looking for cars. So be very, very careful. From the emergency management side, just a quote, "Preparedness when properly pursued is the way of life, not a sudden spectacular program." And that's from Spencer Kimball, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Terbrack. And thank you very much to the city, cities directors and staff who have been working around the clock to prepare their departments for safe reopening to the public. Our library opened up for grab and go visits today. You can now browse the collections, make your selections and check out in person. The copy machine, fax and scanner are also now available and computers will be available again starting June twenty-first. The youth summer reading program also kicks off this month with online storytimes, take home craft kits, Facebook Live and Zoom events. You can find all of the details on the library's website or by giving them a call. The beautification advisory committee will be facilitating the annual tree walk this Saturday. I think with some help from the tree board and the environmental advisory committee as well. So this Saturday, June twelfth, we are meeting in front of the high school in the parking lot right across Catawba from the high school at ten AM. I've done this walk in the past and it's, it's a lot of fun, very safe, socially distant. We pick up door hangers and take a section and go and enjoy the lovely weather and promote the free tree program and provide the applications for people to make a request through our DPW for a tree to be planted in their easement. So I encourage anybody who loves trees, loves Berkeley, loves our community to come out this Saturday, ten AM and help get those flyers out to our residents. The citizens engagement advisory committee recently launched a Facebook group for Berkeley residents, businesses and all community members with the purpose of us sharing resources and information to help one another. It is like many Facebook groups, what we make of it. So I encourage you to check it out, to join. You'll see posts about providing resources for health, mental health, which is health, of course, of free resources for food and to support food stability for families. And encouragement for you as residents, community members, to go on and make your own posts of resources that you would like to share with other community members. So it is called the Berkeley Community Resources Group. And again, you can find that on Facebook. June has always been a favorite month filled with pride celebrations, graduations and the start of summer vacations. This June feels especially festive as we finally feel safe gathering outdoors after a long period of social isolation. Can hardly wait to be back together in person at the grand opening celebration of Oxford Park on Friday. I'll see you there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honors. Couple of quick updates from our various committees as well. The Downtown Development Authority, the board meets this week's Wednesday in just a couple of days' time at eight thirty in the morning. It will, as always, be recorded and posted to downtownberkeley.com. So if, if anyone wants to see all the great action packed excitement of the DDA meetings, they're, they're all archived right there. Last week, we had a chance to review the revised DIA sponsored mural that is planning to be placed on the side of Rubina, on Rubina, on the side of the old Berkeley Theater, the Rite Aid building there. It's really coming together. The, the, the regional director of Rite Aid property management was on the call with us and they're working their approval process with the, fingers crossed to begin development of the initiative. You know, the actual painting sometime in August is what they're thinking, which would be great. And I've heard, and I understand from trusted sources, that work will soon resume on the DDA design guidelines. Really happy to hear that. We'd spent a lot of time and effort and taxpayer dollars on those. And so to hear that, that, that work will resume at some point here is very encouraging. And to, if you want to watch DDA meetings or learn about any upcoming events, visit downtownberkeley.org where you'll see details about the Street Art Fest coming up on August seventh and the Berkeley Art Bash on September eleventh. The historical committee is, is very happy to report that the museum will resume its hours of operations beginning next week on June sixteenth, Wednesdays from ten AM to one PM and Sundays from two o'clock until four o'clock in the afternoon. And they will continue to be closed on holidays such as Father's Day on June twentieth. And as a segue from the DDA, the, you know, folks may have noticed the new wayfinding signs that are located throughout our downtown. The museum folks have the, the old signs, you know, with my favorite, our old city colors fade in rust. And there'll be, they'll be displaying those sometime soon. And also coming up from the museum is a, is a quarterly newsletter, which will be great to see, to continue the conversation of great things that our city can be proud of and all the cool things that we're doing now to make it even better. The technology committee meets in a couple of weeks' time, actually just next week, on the, June sixteenth, which will be great, right out there on Wednesday. And they still eagerly await any potential news on the Alexa skill that the group put together a couple of years back. But in the meanwhile, a cyber tip that the group offered was the notion of being sure to ensure that your websites are secure, AKA surf safely. When you're visiting websites, just make sure that, that they are secure so that your data is, is protected and the information you're receiving is, has been vetted and validated. Most browsers, web browsers show like a lock or it says the word secure. If the site is secure and if it's not, it'll have like a not secure or a broken lock kind of an icon. Another trick you can do is if you're typing in the address, if it, if it starts with HTTPS, then that S stands for secure. And if it's just HTTP, then you know that it's, it's not secure. That doesn't mean you shouldn't completely not trust it. But with the increase in cyber attacks and ransomware, be sure that you visit, be sure that the sites that you visit are secure. And another good, secure trusted source tells me that, that one of the websites that is near and dear to my heart will soon gain its, was called a certificate to ensure that it is safe. So I eagerly, and the committee eagerly awaits that in the, in the coming days here to ensure that, that site that we love so much is in fact, can be trusted by residents. And in general, you know, if you see something, say something. If you're uncomfortable with the site, report it to the operator and help, help make sure that other folks are safe too. And finally, it was Myra Sakim who once said, "In the absence of information, we often jump to the worst conclusions." Now, almost everyone's done it, right? After all, we're only human. We see something that really upsets us or really excites us and we quickly fire off a post on some social media thing that we regret or send out a flame or email that we wish we hadn't sent. It's interesting, there's a study back in twenty sixteen, as social media was, you know, on the upswing, that said sixty percent of Facebook users forward the articles and headlines based on only reading the headline without actually reading the article itself. And in twenty eighteen, a couple of years later, a similar study found that that trend had increased up to seventy percent. So seventy percent of the time, the stuff that you see from your friends and neighbors, they didn't even read it. They just saw the headline and forwarded it. And, you know, I can commend the excitement, but, you know, there's more to the story than, than just the tantalizing, you know, clickbait headline there. It's often quite difficult to think clearly when, and when we're in emotional states. And, you know, when I find myself in these situations, I try to take a few steps back and get myself into a mental state of curiosity. You know, what don't I know about the situation? That, that if I knew, might help me re-understand what's happening. Who should I speak with about that? What damage could I do by piling on too soon to something? Especially with this pandemic still going on, you know, we're all under a lot of stress. And so I'm encouraging folks to, 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 to shift that from being under stress to seeking to understand. And with that, I want to thank you for, for my time tonight and I wish everybody a safe and happy week.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Mayor Protemdean?
Thank you, Your Honor. At our last city council meeting, a resident implied that our Berkeley Public Safety Department operates a quota system for tickets per month or per year. That couldn't be further from the truth. In fact, ticket quotas are illegal, but it's a belief held by a small minority. When any city or business prepares a budget, we have to project revenues and expenses. I do it at my knit shop every year. You can't build a budget without projections, so we rely on past experience. How much came in, how much went out? We look at the prior year so that, you know, and we know there's going to be some fluctuation, but we're just trying to get a sense of things. Our finance department does a fantastic job of producing a very detailed, comprehensive budget for us. In fact, they receive awards for their work. A line item in the city budget is revenue generated by the public safety department. Projecting a number comparable to last year does not mean that sufficient tickets must be written to meet that number. It's therefore disingenuous to promote such a belief and at worst, it calls into question the ethics and honesty of our exemplary public safety department. For that reason, I want to be clear that we do not set ticket quotas here in Berkeley. We do, however, prosecute those who violate our laws and ordinances. If residents have any questions about anything in the city, instead of coming to the microphone to raise that question, I suggest that you reach out to whichever department you have questions about because you'll get answers and you'll get the truth. I know that this resident has exchanged emails with Chief Kane and I'm very happy to know that they're meeting in person tomorrow. I'm encouraged by that and I'm grateful to both of them for taking the time to sit down and have a conversation. I want all residents to know that Chief Kane welcomes questions and he's open to dialogue. All you have to do is pick up the phone. I'm proud of our public safety department and the first-class service that they provide to our residents. They go beyond the call of duty every day and I thank them for it. Parks and Recreation update. And we all know that the Oxford Park naming and grand opening is this Friday, June eleventh at four PM. And the splash pad and restrooms will be open also beginning on the eleventh at four PM. The splash pad hours and rules will be posted at the park. The community center reopened on June first. Outdoor programming continues. Indoor meetings, rentals and programs are now available. The benches have been donated by various members of the community are now in city parks. Please take some time to check those out. If you would like your home on the map for the community garage sale, please call Parks and Recreation to register and that number is two four eight six five eight three four seven zero. And in closing, I'd like to remind everyone about the outdoor movie in the park behind the community center on June twenty-second. The movie has yet to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henan.
Yes, there's nothing new to report from the ZDA or the tree board and neither has a meeting for the month of June. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned previously by a council member, the city staff is eagerly awaiting the return of the public to our facilities. As I put in my newsletter, I, LL Cool J's nineteen ninety classic, Don't Call It A Comeback, is, has been heavy on my mind. City staff has been here the whole time, working hard for our residents, but now we get to do it face to face once again. And as I mentioned in the past, for, for a pack of public servants, nothing is more exciting than getting to have one-on-one time with our residents once again. So keep a lookout. There'll be a couple of different updates coming up. Of course, Parks and Rec is already open. Our library opened today. City Hall is opening next Monday, all culminating in July one, really having, being wide open to our public again. So if the excitement is palpable in my voice, that is because we get to kind of put, put the last fifteen months beside us and get to look people in the eye again, which is extremely exciting. Not that our virtual services are going away. We still offer a multitude of ways to do business with the community. But again, there's nothing just quite like getting to say hello and shake someone's hand once again. So excited, excited to get back to that. Thank you, sir.
Only if you are referencing the nineteen ninety Grammy award winning Mama Said Knock You Out album, by Mr. Cool J, so thank you for that. Mr. Crist?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One item of potential legislation that our office is following is House Bill forty-seven twenty-two and Senate Bill four four six, which council is probably aware of. That topic addresses short-term rentals and as currently drafted, may eliminate or preempt local units of government from weighing in and regulating and managing short-term rentals in their particular community. So our office will continue to monitor that matter as it progresses through committee and keep council advised of, of what is occurring on that front. Nothing further, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crist, and thank you for being with us this evening. Just a few things that have not yet been mentioned. I received an email from residents, actually all of council did, not only a resident, but also a very proud parent to inform us that our Berkeley High School Women's Varsity softball team is the district champs this year. I believe they also won on Saturday. I can double check that continuing. But a couple of important things. They had a record of twenty-three and eleven, but just as important was how they represented the city on and off the field in terms of sportsmanship. Certainly, you know, you're proud, just touches the surface of how we should really feel about the, the way that they represented our high school and our, our community. And a last note, the GPA on the team was three point eight five. That's a great GPA for anybody, let alone athletes who are practicing and doing things a lot of times and still have to make sure that they fit school and education. And so certainly something to be extremely proud of. And, and while we're on the education subject, I want to thank all of the teachers as we come to the end of the school year for, for guiding our students through the end of one school year and into another one that was certainly unlike anything we've ever encountered, at least in the last hundred years. So much so that it's my understanding that the teachers actually wanted to forego summer break this year. They had just felt like they were into a routine, wanted to just continue moving on right into next year, but the students disagreed, so that will not be happening. Our schools do get out this coming Thursday, just in time to see everybody at Oxford Park on Friday. Our schools do get out this coming Thursday, just in time to see everybody at Oxford Park on Friday at four PM. And as has been mentioned, as everything else is beginning to open up and return to normalcy, we have one final virtual meeting for council, our next June meeting. And then after that, we will be back to the council chambers in July. For me, that means I get to wear shorts one more meeting before it's time to go back to the full suit. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So move. The four. Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support for Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll?
Bean?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. The June seventh, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the thirty-eighth council of the city of Berkeley is adjourned.